Manistee City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 17th, 2017 at 7:00 PM is now called to order. Please stand for pleasurable reason.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of America and to the Constitution of America, and to the one nation under God, indivisible, liberal and free.
State clerk, would you please take your role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Panier?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
And city engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. Any city wishing to address the state on agenda-related items? Have none. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked within after it are on a consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, and notification regarding the next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion? Take your role, please.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Panier?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Bylaw Amendment on January... Oh, sorry. On January 3rd, 2017, the City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority amended Section 2.7, meetings of the bylaw eliminating requirement for quarterly meetings. At this time, council could take action to adopt bylaws for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and authorize the mayor to execute the document. I'll make the motion. I'll second. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion? If you take your role, please.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Panier?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an MDOT Performance Resolution for Governmental Agencies. The Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, requires municipalities to enter into a performance resolution for governmental agencies in order to apply for trunk line permits. The City of Manistee applies for annual permits in order to operate and maintain water and sewer utilities, Blossom Boulevard, and other various functions the city performs along the U.S. 31 trunk line. At this time, council could take action to approve the performance resolution for governmental agencies with the Michigan Department of Transportation and further authorize the Public Works Director and the City Manager to apply for MDOT permits on the city's behalf. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlam and a second by Councilmember Cooper. To approve the motion. Is there any discussion? Take your role, please.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Panier?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of appointing Chief Financial Officer Edward Bradford as the responsible official for the proposed $1 million Community Development Block Grant for the former North Channel Outlet Building redevelopment. The City of Manistee is applying for a $1 million Community Development Block Grant to help fund the restoration of the former North Channel Outlet Building. The grant will be used for blight elimination and historic restoration. The city is required to appoint a responsible officer if that individual is not the chief elected official mayor of the city. The responsible official will certify the Michigan CDVG application, sign the grant agreement, and payment request, and execute any additional documents required to carry out and complete the grant. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution appointing Chief Financial Officer Edward Bradford as the responsible official. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Panier. Is there any discussion on the item? There's none, please take your role.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Panier?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an agreement with Hager Consulting LLC and third-party administrator and third-party administrator for the Community Development Block Grant. The City of Manistee is applying for a $1 million Community Development Block Grant to help fund the restoration of the former North Channel Outlet Building. This grant will be used for blight elimination and historic restoration. The city issued a request for proposal for an MEDC-certified third-party administrator through the MEDC. The city received two responses, and Hager Consulting LLC scored the highest and was the lowest cost. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to enter into an agreement with Hager Consulting LLC to act as the third-party administrator for the former North Channel Outlet Building Community Development Block Grant. I'll make the motion.
Second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitlam. Are there any questions or discussion? I have a question. I'm not sure who to address it to, but the question would be, Hagerdy was 261 hours and Johnston was 900 hours. Is that... It just seems like a lot of difference there.
I would agree, but the scope of work that they did on was the same, and they're both certified grant administrators through the MEDC. I did speak with the chosen vendor, and they assured me that they would be able to complete it in that amount of time. So this project is only expected to last, you know, the construction's going to be done probably by the end of calendar 2017. So it really shouldn't take more than a number of hours at the low there bid.
But not depending on you or anybody else to do any of the work, are they going to do it all?
Well, the intent is that we're not going to do any of the work except for, you know, sign the documents, review them, that sort of thing. That's not the, you know, the intention was, that's why we go as a third-party administrator. And I made that very clear to them in our phone conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or discussion? Take your role, please.
I'm sorry, just for a point of reference, how much does this cost? Like, this is over, this is outside the grant, right? How much does this cost? Or is it inside the grant?
It's actually inside the grant, so the developer will be getting 970,000 and 30,000 comes out of the $1 million grant to pay for the administrator.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? City clerk, would you please take your role?
Councilmember Panier?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A report from 2-1-1 and the Manistee Blacker Airport. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from cooperating agency or organization or department. At this time, Ms. Evelyn Surtlet will report on the activities of 2-1-1 action team and respond to any questions the council members may have regarding their activities.
Well, good evening. Does everyone have a packet they can refer to? If you would please follow along in that packet as I provide the report. I am Evelyn Split, the 2-1-1 Director for the Manistee County, and I want to thank you for allowing me to share 2-1-1 with you this evening. 2-1-1 was first created in Atlanta, Georgia in 1997. Its main purpose was to aid callers during times of disaster. It relieved 911 of non-emergency calls. Each state started to develop their own plan shortly after, and it has become the most comprehensive health and human service resource across the nation. It serves over 240 million Americans. On the next page, there's a State of Michigan map. There are seven call centers that are integrated across the state. There is 99% availability. Callers can dial in 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and there's also a website, my211.org. This is available for organizational updates, reporting, and resource searching. A smartphone app is also being developed to accommodate those customers who would like even quicker access to local, regional, state, and national resources. 2-1-1 is a countywide program with the capacity to serve nearly 25,000 Manistee County residents. 2-1-1 partners with 911 and other public safety officials during times of disaster while empowering people with information and referrals to improve the quality of their lives. On page five, you'll see a list of our action team members. This is a subcommittee of the United Way of Manistee County, and you can see that they are from a wide range of community discipline. This group of highly-trained volunteers actually monitors the service on a local level. On page six, you'll notice a breakdown of kind of a very simplified way of explaining 2-1-1. And the picture is the executive director for the Regional Call Center in Muskegon. 2-1-1 is absolutely free and confidential. It's an easy-to-remember number, and it can be accessed anywhere in the state of Michigan and across the nation. Callers can access information and referrals from the privacy and comfort of their own homes. Recently, 2-1-1 became Michigan 2-1-1, and the database now extends across the state, allowing every call center to access all the information that is available. There is over 30,000 different resources in the 2-1-1 database. On page eight, you'll see a list of potential local disasters. Protecting constituents during local disasters is a big concern. 2-1-1 has the infrastructure and the manpower to assist emergency management, public safety departments, and governmental entities during those types of crises. Public Safety and Crisis Recovery Efforts. 2-1-1 is there to assist during disasters. The picture that is featured on page nine is in 2008 when we had those terrible storms and many of the roads were actually blown out. Mason County had 2-1-1 at the time, and Manistee County was still in the developmental stages. They access 2-1-1 to field the non-emergency calls instead of those calls going to 911. So that is an example of how 2-1-1 was used locally during one of those tragedies. 2-1-1 is the vital link between emergency management, the general public, and service providers. On page 10, you can see a graph of how 2-1-1 can be used to share information. It can go back and forth. Emergency management can use 2-1-1 to disperse information to the public, but the public can also use 2-1-1 to help emergency management assess the damage in the community just by making a phone call to say maybe their road has been washed out or their electricity is down during the storm. On page 11 is a breakdown of the $2.11. 2-1-1 impacts the local economy by connecting callers in need of services with people who can provide those services. For example, in Manistee County, a caller needed a new septic system. She dialed 2-1-1 and was referred to an organization who could pay for that septic. A local business was contacted to install the new system and was paid by the resource located through the 2-1-1 phone call. Another example, in Manistee, a young man desperately needed new eyeglasses. A call was made to 2-1-1, and a local organization with a program to help pay for that eyewear offered to help. The young man was connected to a local business, and the eyeglasses he so desperately needed were paid for by that 2-1-1 referral. 2-1-1 is available by dialing into the call center 24 hours a day, seven days a week, similar to 911. Neither 911 nor 2-1-1 are used every day by everyone, but still available to anyone all the time. The cost to operate 2-1-1 locally is about $1.23 per person annually based on population. Dollars to support the system are provided through local partnerships, grants, and fundraising. Each partnering entity provides a small portion of the cost for the countywide coverage, helping to keep the system free with no additional dialing fees or service costs for the customer. Our biggest fundraiser and community outreach project is the 2-1-1 adapted day calendar, and each of you receive one of those as a gift from us to you. This calendar incorporates school artwork from students across the county. Every student from kindergarten through 12th grade is invited to participate. So we use this as a fundraiser because businesses, organizations, and individuals can make adoptions throughout the calendar. The students receive awards, and we have an award ceremony hosted by the Vogues Theater. So it's a way for us to spread the news about 2-1-1, but also we raise funds to help sustain the system locally. The 2-1-1 database is built on available local, regional, state, and national resources. As I mentioned, there's over 30,000 resources in that database. Included in your packet is a Manistee County Service Index. And that includes all the different types of resources that Manistee County residents can access by dialing into the 2-1-1 system. You can see it's quite extensive. Seasonal programs like holiday meals, gift baskets, winter clothing, those would not be on this index because those are removed and added as needed. Organizations can choose not to have their information included in the 2-1-1 database. Many of them have resources that are for in-house referrals only. So we do have special inclusion and exclusion criteria for the information that goes into the 2-1-1 database. On the next page, number 13, you will see a snapshot of an actual raw data call report from the Manistee County. This is one of the essential benefits of 2-1-1. This shows what people in our community are requesting. There are also reports available that show the unmet needs in the community and the reason why those needs are unmet. There is another raw data report that's included in your packet, and it's a little more extensive in detail. And please feel free to review that when you have an opportunity. This is an annual call report. It's very raw data, but that is, it's very interesting to review what our biggest needs are in the community. On page 14, I just want to remind you that everyone can really use 2-1-1, from employment services to veterans affairs to the elderly. The types of resources are so extensive from A to Z in the database. And we ask that you share the information. Again, we want to thank you for your support all these years. We've been, I think, visiting with city council for over nine years now, and there's a lot of new faces here tonight, but I'm very pleased to be here. On the back page is my contact information. You can email me with questions. You can also dial 2-1-1 with questions if you have questions later on tonight or tomorrow or whenever. If you are interested in a 2-1-1 workshop, we do workshops right on site where we come to locations and we go through the 2-1-1 database. We show you how to use it. We also show you the backside of 2-1-1, where the reports come from and how those are compiled. It's very informative information. So please contact me if you have any more questions or if you'd like to schedule a workshop, presentation, that type of thing. You can also review the website, my211.org. Are there any questions this evening?
Do you know when the app will be ready to go?
We're hoping sometime, it's going to launch sometime this year.
Okay.
We're very excited about that.
That was one of my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Do you have any statistics on the age, age groups of people that use your service?
We can gather that information. That's one of the types of reports that we can pull from the database.
I guess I'd be interested in seeing that, and I'm curious, I know I have called 2-1-1 once just to kind of check on it a couple of years ago, and I was a little bit disappointed because they kept directing me to a website. I'm just wondering if there's a little bit more personal involvement now with phone calls because I know a lot of people wouldn't know where to begin, don't have access to computers easily or have some technology issues.
Well, it's typically, you usually get connected with a live person. With the new integrated statewide system, you dial 2-1-1, and then you're able to enter a zip code. You enter your zip code for where you're looking for services. So this is another benefit. If you live in Manistee, but maybe you have elderly parents that live in Newberry, you can enter their zip code as well to find out what services might be available for them in Newberry. But the phone system has changed dramatically just over the last couple of years because now again, the databases are completely integrated so that no matter where you call from the state of Michigan, you can enter your zip code and get resources from that for that area. And then what happens is it goes into a queue, and if you're a senior, you have an option to choose that option. There'll be other options if you need, and they change depending on the season. Right now, we're getting close to tax season. So there'll be something on there that says if you need additional assistance with your taxes, and you're looking for low-cost tax preparation, that type of recording will be on there, and that'll send you to a different, to a different queue. But you always have the option of leaving your phone number now, and they will call you back directly. You'll be able to talk to a person over the phone and explain your situation in great detail. And what's great about that and what's different, and so many people have asked me this, well, what about Google? You can Google anything nowadays. Well, you can Google a lot of things, but you don't have that human touch, and that Google is not going to ask you, why do you need food? Did you recently become unemployed? Is there another person in your household that has added to the strain? So that is where 2-1-1 fills in that gap. They're human. They understand. They're, they are counselors, and they do a lot of problem solving with people over the phone. So if there isn't a resource that could help them, say they called for maybe transportation, something like that, and there wasn't a resource in the community that filled that need, they would help them problem solve. What else can we help you with? How else can we get you to the doctors? Maybe there's another resource that's not Manistee-based that would come to get you and take you to your doctors. And the database is built on those available resources and local resources. And we tell people all the time, if you know of a new service or a new program, let us know because we want to add that. We want to make sure that people get all the information that they're entitled to when they make that phone call.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Do you, do you break this down like for the city also, or is it just county stats?
It can be broken down by zip code. So, and they would, yes, they would have to identify that they're within the city limits, but it would be by...
So they could tell me how many calls they actually receive from the city?
By zip code, yeah. We could do by zip code. I know zip code is farther stretching than the city limits, though.
And follow-up? Do you do any follow-up and keep them aware of the follow-up?
They do 10% of follow-up on the phone calls that they receive. And they also offer, now they're offering a survey, and I forgot to explain that, like after the phone call. So they have immediate follow-up as well. After the phone call, the caller can choose to participate in the survey.
So you're able to track success rate now?
Yes.
I'd be interested in knowing what numbers would be for the City of Manistee.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Adam. Thank you.
And also, the numbers as far as requests are concerned, we also have to consider the organizations that are participating in 2-1-1. There are lots of organizations within the city limits that participate and have their information available to callers through the 2-1-1 system. Is there anything else?
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Barry Lynn will report on the activities of Manistee Blacker Airport and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Thank you, council members, for giving me this opportunity to give you an annual update on the, what's going on at the Manistee County Blacker Airport. Dive right in. Start off with a review of some of the things that have happened out of the airport over the past year, starting off with our commercial airline service. This past year, we had 9,362 passengers total that flew through the airport, and that's down about 2% from 2015. But that comes with a caveat, which I'll explain next. Last year in 2015, I guess now two years ago since we're now in 2017, for the first time, we had a trial where we had continuing service on Tappelston. And part of the goal of that was to boost our numbers because even though those passengers weren't stopping, getting off, or staying in Manistee, because they were flying through Manistee, we got to count them. And actually, we get to count them twice because of how they do the numbers. That increased, those passengers for that summer season to Tappelston increased our overall numbers about 10% that year. This past year, we did not have that service. It's something that we might consider again in the future, but financially, it didn't fit within the budgets. So if you subtract out that service to kind of compare apples to apples across the two years, what I call kind of our core commercial passengers, those traveling between Manistee and Chicago, this past year, we were up about 7%. So still seeing some good growth. It's not as high a growth as it has been in the last few years where we were seeing 20, on the order of 20%, but we're still going in the right direction. This is just a slide that shows some of the history of the airport as it relates to our commercial service. And really, as you look through this top five list of service years, these are total passengers in these years, the top five years, and the airport's been providing commercial service for 54 years now. This top five really tells you three separate stories. I'll start with numbers four and five, 1968 and '69. Until recently, the late... Until recently, the late 60s and early 70s were the heyday of commercial service at the airport. The highest number of passengers we saw until very recently were from that era. Then in 2011, for a brief nine-month, 10-month period, we had Frontier Airlines, which completely blew all pass numbers out of the water. That was 2011 with our nearly 22,000 passengers. What we're seeing right now is that we're settling into highs that we haven't seen since the late 60s and early 70s with 2015 and 16, just shy of 10,000 total passengers. So we've really recreated where we were historically from the strength of the airport in its earlier days. And we've kind of, we're back to that level. The reason I like to include this slide or this information, what I'm talking about kind of the airport and some of its history is it shows that the community has a need for our service. Especially 2011 shows we have tremendous potential growth still remaining in front of us as long as we can tie all of the threads together to provide the service that people want and need, which we're constantly looking towards. We are into now the third year of a four-year grant with the U.S. Department of Transportation. This grant, our alternative essential air service grant, is what enables us to have commercial air service. The Department of Transportation has a program that subsidizes air carriers in small communities. In Michigan, we are one of nine airports in the state that receives subsidy. Majority of those are in the UP, excuse me. But in the lower peninsula, we share in being subsidized with Muskegon, Manistee, Pellston, and Alpena are the four airports in the lower peninsula that receive subsidy. Without that, and that subsidy amounts to about 2.3 million a year for our airport, similar amounts for the other airports throughout the state. Without that subsidy, we would not be receiving this service. So as I said, we're in the third year of our four-year contract. That contract will come up in 2018 and we will be shortly beginning the process of working towards that next grant agreement. Airline performance, there's always, in fact, I saw it today on our Facebook page, there's always concern among the public as to flying out of small airports. Is my plane going to go? What's the reliability? And historically, Manistee has not had a good story to tell. But with our current carrier brand, it is North Country Sky. We've actually been doing very well under their service now for these last few years. This past year, we had a cancellation rate of just shy of 2%, which is about the industry average for all carriers. And actually, if you looked at other small airports like in the state, that's actually better than typically small airport C. Generally, when flights get canceled, they cancel flights to smaller airports first before they cancel, like cancel flights at larger airports because generally, smaller airports have smaller planes, therefore, they're inconveniencing smaller numbers of people by canceling flights to smaller airports. So when we're running at a 2% cancellation rate, we're actually doing as well as larger airports in the country. Another interesting factor statistic is the seasonal demand that we have. And I think it will ties into the nature of the use of our airport. The difference between our demand and our use between January and July, kind of our two extremes, is about fourfold. In January, we'll see on the order of about 400 passengers and in July, 1,600 or more. And what that says is the makeup of our passengers changes very much seasonally. The off-season now where we're in, what we see is a majority of our passengers, our local community residents utilizing our service to meet their needs. In the summer, the vast majority is travelers visiting our area, whether those be people vacationing, people visiting family and friends, people who own second homes in the area. The influx that we see in air travel in the summer is due to people coming to our region and our community. Those people are coming with them, they're bringing their dollars and overall strengthening our economy. So the seasonal demand that we have is much more than typically airport C. Typically, airports C seasonal demand, but not to the extremes that we do. As a result of that, our schedule changes dramatically from the winter to the summer. This past year, we had a schedule that had on certain days, three flights a day, which is the most frequency we've probably ever had at the airport. Typically, historically, we've had two flights or one flight a day. The demand is there in the summer for us to have three flights a day, especially with the type of aircraft that we're using. In the winter though, now we're settled into one flight a day to meet that demand. Another item here, the last item here that I, is important is during the past year, the State Aeronautics Commission adopted a new policy plan for Michigan air service. And the focus of that policy plan was a discussion and ultimately recommendations for service at small airports. The first draft versions of that plan were very harsh towards small airports and their future and whether or not they should be having air service. We worked with many of the other small airports in the state to get some of those very negative aspects of that plan removed so that it was more supportive of air service to the smaller remote communities in the state. For those that have been on council for a year or more, this next topic or this next item should ring a bell. We've been working with the FAA for probably going on two years now to clear up the FAA's view of sponsorship of the airport. And for your purpose of sponsorship is essentially who owns or controls the airport. Sponsor is their terminology for it. The FAA in their records had as the sponsor of the airport and technically still does, joint county and city responsibility for the airport. As you may be aware, the city no longer is a responsible party for the airport, but the FAA was never in the loop on that change, which happened now well over 10 years ago. So we're going through this process, a lot of documentation to basically get their approval and recognition of the current state of affairs. And as I said, this has been ongoing for about two years now. We believe we have answered all of their questions. They haven't come back to us in the last about four months with new requests for information, but yet at the same time, they haven't put their stamp of approval yet and we're waiting for that. And a reason that's important is the FAA has said they will not grant us any new capital improvement grant dollars until this issue is cleared up. So we've basically kind of been on hold now for about two years without receiving additional funding. That funding is kind of being queued up. It basically can be kind of held for four years, so we're not losing it, but we do need to get this cleared up. And I anticipate that happening shortly. But in dealing with the federal government, sometimes things don't happen on the schedules that we all want. Other some minor things that occurred out at the airport this year, we switched fuel suppliers. Used to be, so sell Avfuel as a fuel brand. This year, we've switched to Phillips 66. And overall, I'm happy with that change. I believe that the Phillips brand has a higher standard of safety as it relates to some of their operations or requirements. Presented us a couple hiccups in coming up to speed with them, but overall, I think that's, they're good things for us to be doing. We also began some T-hanger improvements. T-hangers are referred to kind of the shape of a hangar that airplanes can park in. And we've got a bank of hangers, it's 10 hangers, and those are on the order of about 60 years old and really have had no improvements done to them in that time period. And in the market for trying to attract people to build and rent these hangers, they're not really competitive on the nature of surrounding airport offerings. So we need to invest in them to kind of bring them up. And we've started some of those projects and really it's kind of a multi-year phased set of improvements that we're doing on them. And then we've, a year ago, we did a new strategic plan with AES helping us. This year, we did an update of that and I will talk a little bit about that. The airport strategic plan, our mission statement is to provide high-quality and sustainable aviation services and facilities, with our vision statement being that the Manistee County Blacker Airport will be instrumental to the economic well-being of the region. We really have a focus on economic development and what the, what the role that the airport plays in the economy of our region. And that extends to the city, the county, and even the surrounding areas. Overall, we have four goals. The first goal and really what a good chunk of our strategic plan talks about is economic development. The second goal under collaboration, airport infrastructure, and then finally organizational development. I just wanted to highlight a couple things. One of the things we did this year in our strategic plan update is we started drilling down into more details. Last year was really kind of the big framework, the high-level goals. This year, we started working down into more of the strategies that come out of that and actually prioritizing and then assigning owners to some of those strategies so that we can start making more measurable progress going forward. And under economic development, I picked out three. Some of these were new things that were brought to the attention. All three of these are things that are kind of on-airport items, although the strategic plan talks about not only economic development within the boundaries of our fence, but also our neighboring properties and areas, as well as more broadly within the region as a whole. But the types of things that we're discussing, and these are kind of all on-airfield things, we really don't have much, as many businesses that are actually located on the airport today. And as you saw earlier, or maybe you inferred from some of the things I was saying is, our airport is really structured around supporting our commercial air service. That is something that distinguishes us from Luddington or Cadillac or Frankfurt or kind of our nearest airports of similar size and in some ways, similar capabilities. We have commercial air service, they don't. That kind of defines us. However, if that service were to go away, our airport needs to exist based on all the other services that we provide. And we need to make sure that we have a diversified base of revenues that can support our airport going forward. And we just can't put all of our eggs into one basket. So, you know, types of businesses that we're looking to try to attract to the airport include maintenance businesses, air cargo carriers, as well as we really like an onsite restaurant. We think that blends well with, many airports typically have restaurants located on them, but especially because we do have commercial service, we have a need for those people who are waiting to have the ability to grab a bite to eat and a vending machine just doesn't quite cut it all the time. Under number two, collaboration, kind of the main item there is starting to look at the intermodal regional transportation plan and how the airport fits into that with all of the other types of transportation that tie into our region. And we're looking to AES to help us move that forward. From an infrastructure standpoint, our top goal is to lengthen our main runway. In the summer, the length of our runway is fine. Days like today where you've got ice and other things, you'd like it to be a lot longer. And with a little bit longer runway, we can accommodate year-round the types of aircraft that we can easily handle in the summer when conditions are sunny and dry and not icy and slippery. And then finally, organizational development. The airport exists as, is basically owned and controlled by the Manistee County Blacker Airport Authority. That airport authority was originally created jointly with the county and the city. And as I mentioned earlier, the city a number of years ago withdrew from that authority. But the authority still exists even though it has only one member, which is not typically how authorities are meant to be organized. One of the items that we're looking at is trying to look regionally and see if there are other neighboring communities that probably would need neighboring counties, that would they be interested in joining our airport authority and kind of expanding the responsibilities to cover multiple different airports? So we're looking both to our south, to our north, because each, each neighboring community has certain unique characteristics that potentially we could see either cost savings or other benefits of working regionally as opposed to just focusing just on Manistee County. Overall, what's going good? Our service is reliable. As I mentioned before, a 2% cancellation rate is very good, especially when considering small airports. 80% of our flights operate on time, which is also very good and comparable to industry averages. And our performance is significantly better from where we were kind of basically before our current carrier and Frontier before that. Historically, we've seen lows in 2010 where 14% of our flights were canceled. And that's almost like flip the coin, is my flight going to go today type numbers. We're a long ways from where we were, although, and rightly so, there are members in the community that still were burned by some of those, so those days and have concerns to this day. Our fares are affordable, especially as compared to, if your goal is to get to Chicago by air, Manistee's really the best way to do it. Fares out of Traverse City for that same flight will be generally double what they are out of Manistee. And we're the only regional air carrier airport that has free parking, which can make a big difference if you're staying anywhere for a few days, more than a few days. But we do have some challenges and these are reasons why we're at that 10,000 number and not that 20,000 number that we were when Frontier was here. It's somewhat cumbersome to tickets, a connecting fare, you have to buy two tickets, baggage, traversal is cumbersome. We don't have a recognized brand. North Country Sky, while at least it sounds like an airline, it's not something that most people have heard of before. So we, you know, deal with that name recognition challenges. These aren't issues that prevent people from connecting on and utilizing airport, but they make it more difficult. So a lot of our marketing and information tends to be of the educational form where we're trying to inform people of how to use our service, how to use Manistee as opposed to other airports. And all of this that's happening is happening in the background of regional and national changes. Airline consolidation at the major level has significantly changed the airline landscape over the last decade. There's a current evolving pilot shortage that is causing problems for smaller airlines in, to retain pilots to provide their services. And for an airport that doesn't need 100-seat jets to accommodate our needs... And for an airport that doesn't need 100-seat jets to accommodate our needs, there's not a lot of aircraft that are the size that are appropriate for the level of service we need. So that also becomes a challenge. Well, this got a little messed up in the formatting, but this just talking about some airfares and the there's some examples here that I wanted to show for a couple of different reasons. I've got four different destination fares from four different airports in the region, Manistee, Traverse City, Grand Rapids, and Muskegon. That's what the four columns are supposed to be in numbers, even though they're not lining up unfortunately. And four different cities across the United States. I track on a monthly basis airfares to 20 different destinations across the U.S. from these four different airports. And there's a 20-city average as the last row in the table. What we typically see on average during most of the year is Grand Rapids is the least expensive airport in the region. Generally, Manistee is the second least expensive. Muskegon usually is very close by Manistee and then Traverse City is generally the most expensive. Although on any given month, other than Grand Rapids, that generally doesn't move out of that place, but the other three, they can jockey positions depending on who has a fare sale, what you know, what season it is, et cetera. This is the data for my last airport authority meeting, which was this past week. This is data that was collected about a week and a half ago, and it's basically for air travel next month. And if you look at the 20-seat average, Grand Rapids is the least expensive. Muskegon in this case is number two. Manistee's three, $9 behind, and Traverse City's four, about $23 more than Manistee. The four cities I chose are really chosen to demonstrate a point. In the first one, Chicago, Grand Rapids is the least expensive, although if you're already in Grand Rapids flying to Chicago, you're already most of the way there. So that's not necessarily the most beneficial trip, but it's the least expensive. For Houston, Manistee's the least expensive. For Los Angeles, Muskegon's the least expensive. And for Seattle, Traverse City is the least expensive. On any given day, any airport could be your least expensive airport. So this is an example where each airport is the least expensive on the same travel dates for a different destination. What this doesn't show and is hard to quantify is other costs that people from our region would incur if they were traveling out of various airports. Grand Rapids has parking that generally averages about $10 a day. If you add that on to your costs, that can move that needle, you know, quite a distance. Traverse City's airport parking isn't that much less expensive. Muskegon, you know, more about $5 a day for Muskegon. Depending on where you are, if you've got gas, you've got other expenses to get to other airports. In looking at the total price, we are very competitive with our airfares most of the time. There will always be examples where, you know, that just doesn't make sense because of what airfares or price wars are going on to fly out of Manistee. But generally, we're very competitive with the total cost of flying out of any regional A little bit about airport finances. Generally, the airport operates with a very small general fund balance on the order of about $20,000. In addition, we have a capital improvement fund of about $60,000. Our annual operating budget is about $400,000. Our total budget is about 2.7 million. 2.3 million of that being our federal grant for air service and then 400,000 being our operating budget funded through more local sources. Of our operating budget, about 56% comes from fees we directly charge to the airline. So they basically fund the majority of the airport operations. And again, as I was saying earlier, our airport is geared towards that service. That service is what distinguishes us from our surrounding neighboring airports. About 19% of our revenues for operations come from rents and various other fees that charge to all of our airport users. And then about 25% comes as a subsidy from the county. So we receive about $115,000 a year from the county for airport operations. For major capital improvements, those are predominantly funded by the FAA through our capital grants. And those capital grants are 95%, 5% match. And that 5% match is funded half by the state and half locally. So when we're resurfacing a runway, building a building, doing major things that can cost upwards of a million dollars or more, those funds come through those programs. And then finally, just a list of overall services that are provided out at the airport. We being a half mile from the hospital, we are the destination for lifeline flights that are not helicopter-based. Helicopters directly to the landing pad at the hospital, if it's an aircraft, it comes to our facility and the ambulance is waiting to transport back and forth to the hospital. We have charter and air taxi service, which is basically a non-demand passenger service basically anywhere in the Midwest. We have and support a lot of general aviation flying, both those that base aircraft here in Manistee, as well as those that are visiting our community. And those people are supporting our local businesses. We have flight instruction aircraft round. We have sightseeing flights. And our sightseeing business is actually doing very well since 2008. We are up about tenfold in that. Again, I think that speaks to our region and the popularity of our region as a tourist destination. Commercial air service provided by North Country Sky with service to Chicago. And we also have provide rental cars through our rental leasing. And I believe that is all. Any questions? Any questions?
Barry, the scenic flights out of Manistee, is that 2016, is that up from 2015?
It is actually up about 35% from 2015.
Yes. And how about the private planes coming in or, you know, going golfing? Is that, how's that?
15 to 16 was about equal. We don't actually physically count each aircraft. We measure that kind of through fuel sales and or fees that we charge. Fuel sales were down, but if you don't buy fuel, then you're charged a landing fee. Landing fee gets waived if you purchase fuel. And those were up. So I think we're about equal on that for this year. We had been seeing some fairly steady growth in that as we kind of recovered out of the recession. I think we've kind of now reached a plateau. Hopefully, you can see that continue on up, but last year was kind of a flat year on that.
Do we know where they're going?
The majority of our large aircraft that are coming in are going to Arcadia Lofts. I'm looking forward to the new belt course and new hotel opening up there because I think that will increase that destination coming for a couple of days and applying in for that. The next, what I would say is an evolving trend that I'm seeing more this past year and the last couple of years is individuals who have summer residences in the area, potentially along Lake Michigan, that are utilizing private general aviation at our airport to go to business meetings, et cetera, whereas before I think they would have driven somewhere else and flown commercially. So I think the economy nationwide has allowed that type of demand to surface more than it has been previously. And then I'm also seeing more use of our airport by some of our local factories and major employers in the community. Again, that I think kind of come ebbs and wanes with the overall state of the economy and how their budgets are. But the last couple of years, we've been seeing the the factories and the plants utilize the airport to fly their people in and out. One example I can think of that, one of our factories brought in a set of college recruits that they wanted to impress because they're trying to recruit and it's it's a competitive environment up there to get to hire. So, so a little bit of everything.
Do you see a return to jet service out of Manistee as I think Frontier had?
I, yes and no. I mean, it it may happen, it may not happen. Jets, especially small jets, are not fuel efficient. Turboprops generally for the same number of seats will burn about half the fuel. So depending on where the price of fuel and oil is, that kind of moves that needle as to whether or not jets for smaller aircraft are viable. With the price of fuel where it's been at the last 18 months, it would be fine if it's back where we were in 2013 and 14 with crude oil being $100 or more, but the numbers just don't work there.
And then the shortage, you mentioned a shortage of planes, one thing, shortage of private planes. But the planes that we that come in to Manistee, are they just aging and they're not reproducing that style of plane or?
That is, that is the challenge, yes, is that those aircraft are not currently in production, so they're aging, which generally isn't a problem. Aircraft are so well-maintained that they can be 50 years old and be pristine because pretty much every part on those airplanes is on a regular maintenance cycle and replaced whether it's needed or not based on use and time. So they can be maintained in very good condition for long periods of time. What is happening though is because the manufacturers have stopped producing these, the worldwide demand is sucking up these smaller aircraft. So a lot of them are being purchased and going to provide service in Africa or other parts of the world and basically kind of taking those aircraft out of the United States. So we just have have less frames to actually provide service. So that's part of the challenge there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Barry, are you having flights to Chicago on the weekends or is that still not happening?
In the in this off-season, we have flights on Sunday, not Saturday.
Okay. And I have another question too. Do you have any plans to extend the length of the runway?
That is in our long-range plans. The first step of that is a land acquisition of the next parcel to the east of the airport. And we're kind of in the process of going through that purchase now. Then further down the road is an environmental study. It's at least a five-year, if not a 10-year plan to get there.
Right, I was just curious. Thanks.
I have a question. What's the average amount of passengers you have per flight for the winter and then the summer?
It's, the average is actually fairly similar because we scale the number of flights based on demand. Because it doesn't make sense to be flying empty aircraft ever, which is why in the winter, we don't have flights on Saturdays. In the summer, we have flights every day, some days two, some days three flights. It's kind of adjusting supply to demand. Our goal is, in the industry, it's called load factor, which is the percent of seats filled. This past year in July, or actually August was our highest load factor at 75%. In the winter now, we're down about 15 to 55%. So, you know, that means on average, nine, 10 on a flight in the winter. In the summer, we're probably 14, 15. Our goal would be if you get above about 80% load factor, you're probably turning people away. So that's kind of what we're using as our guide that we need to be adding more flights when we get to that period.
I have to say, over the past few years, I've flown out of Manistee roughly about 20 times and haven't experienced a cancellation. And this past summer, I had to get to St. Louis and flew out of supposedly flying out of Muskegon and they canceled. So one flight out of Muskegon, it was canceled, so.
Now, we do have cancellations, so that's not true of everybody, but on average, what you're saying is, I think, what we're seeing.
Barry, the maintenance and clemency of that airport has always been pristine any time I've been out there and you're being commended.
Well, it is something we pride ourselves on because we view the airport as a gateway to our community and first impressions matter. And if someone is spending multiple thousands of dollars hiring a private aircraft to come in, we want them to be feel welcomed in our community and not feel like they've entered the third world because that's not what we are.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to depart a little bit from my agenda now. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Hollander to step forward and provide an update at his request on his project for 400 foot strip.
Thank you, Mayor. We're in town today for a meeting and thought that it might be beneficial just to bring you up to date on the project. When I get through, if you have any easy questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you have any tough ones, I brought my son, Matt, and our asset specialist, Jason, with me, so please keep that in mind. I thought maybe I would start out by stating as clearly as possible what our goal is for the project. And that is very simply market rate rental housing and commercial space that is readily marketable and usable. That's what we're trying to do. Our architect has concluded that in a three-story elevator service building, we can include 45 one- and two-bedroom apartments and approximately 3,300 square feet of commercial space. There would also be some common area space for the use of the residents and possibly some of that common area space, for example, a fitness facility, might be made available to the public for a fee. The residents would enjoy it at no charge. We will design the building in a way where it is secure so that if the public does have access, the residential portion will be secure. Require probably a card pass to use the elevator and some sort of similar system to have access to the corridors where the apartments are located. All of the units in the building will be accessible. So that means that anybody who's mobility impaired when they enter the front door has access to every unit. There'll be a certain percentage of the units will be barrier-free and all parking will be onsite except for the commercial, which at this point, we're looking at on-street parking for that. It's a challenge. We haven't quite come to grips with how we're going to deal with it, but obviously, when we go before the planning commission, we'll be dealing with it at that time. We're currently completing our engineering studies. We've had a structural engineer in there determining whether or not the existing supporting structure for the building will be sufficient when we add three stories. Obviously, it's something we should have done a little earlier, but we're getting it done now. What you saw today were engineers, if you happen to be by the site, you saw engineers doing soil morgue, soil tests. They were augering down, I think, 80 feet to check what the subsurface soil conditions are underneath the existing columns that are there. We don't know what the answer is yet. Should be somewhere in the next week or so. We don't know what the answer is yet, should be here somewhere in the next week or so. Financing of the project, right now we're looking at an $8 million project. Our major financing, our hard loan, the loan we have to pay principal and interest on on a monthly basis would come from MISTHA. The reason we're using MISTHA is not because we are intending to create units with rent and income restrictions. We're using MISTHA because they have a loan product that makes it more feasible for us to achieve the goals that I articulated earlier. As a part of the trade-off for using MISTHA financing, the IRS requires that at least 20% of the units have rent and income restrictions. And at this point, I previously used 40% for those who might remember that. I'd said that publicly. We can do it at about 20% now. That's what our goal is, and we think we can achieve that. We will also be receiving soft financing. Soft financing may be in the form of a loan, it may be in the form of a grant, but it doesn't require regular monthly principal and interest payments. In the form of a grant, it's a grant. If it's a soft loan, it usually means that at some point in time, we have to pay it back, but only upon the sale or refinancing of the project at some point in the distant future. And we're looking at approximately $3 million to $3.5 million in soft financing. We have targeted where we're going to get that. We think we have a good chance of obtaining it. And then there's somewhere in the neighborhood of a half million to 3/4 million dollars, which the developers themselves will be providing. Now, we do have a development team at this point, and we've brought in Ben and Jerry Pitcher. On a tentative basis, we're finalizing discussions right now, so I can't say that it's completed. But I believe that the current owners of the building will be participating with us in the project. What that means is that the building itself will be contributed, and we won't have to separately finance that cost. That has really aided us in achieving feasibility at this point. Development team will also consist of, while we're in construction out of Grand Rapids, our architect operates under the name of Inform Architecture. They're out of Kalamazoo. Our company creatively named Hollander Development Corporation, 35 years ago, is based in Portage. And then our managed property management company is KMG Prestige. They're out of Mount Pleasant. They manage most of our portfolio of properties in western and central Michigan. They have done so for the past five years. They're one of the largest management companies in the state. They handle both market rate and assisted housing, and they have a very good track record, so we're very comfortable with them. Basically, our goal right now is to make a February 15 filing deadline with MISTHA, and what that will do is tell us whether, give us an idea what the likelihood is of obtaining that hard loan. As a part of that application, we basically have to describe the project. It will require our third market study, by the way, one that MISTHA itself commissions, not us. And in addition to that, some other details that don't involve the city. What we will be coming back to the city for, first of all, we have to work with Historic District Commission, and we'll be at their February meeting, early in February, hopefully to obtain final approval of our concept and approval for the demolition of the building down the first floor, for those of you who remember the original description. Retaining the first floor and building up three floors from that. The other two things that we'll need, as far as I can tell right now, and there may be something I'm missing here at this point, we will be using the obsolete property rehabilitation act and the development incentives that are provided in that. We also qualify for some brownfield reimbursement, so, you know, there'll be TIF financing involved, and we certainly don't want to shortcut any process there. We need to meet with the DVA and follow through on that process. And that's what we'll be doing probably over the next month to six weeks. Beyond that, we'll be doing a little presentation to the major employers in the area and others. I believe most of you, all of you will be invited to it. I think right now it's tentatively scheduled for January 30th at the Ramsdale. So that's being handled, put together by EES, and we'll have further details on that as we get them. Any questions?
Mr. Hollander, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a discussion on corrective action planned for Michigan Department of Treasury letter regarding audit reports for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Council, the city received a letter from Michigan Department of Treasury based on a routine review of the city's audit. They review all the audits that are submitted from the local government, and they sent us a letter saying that they had a concern because we had run a deficit for three straight years, and they went down to further state that they wanted us to address any of the comments of the auditors already. So I reached out to the Treasury to find out, you know, the purpose of the letter because, as far as I was aware, that there's no statutory requirement that you are not allowed to use fund balance. And that is accurate. There is no statutory requirement that prohibits a community from using their fund balance. It happens all the time. So we addressed their letter with a letter back to them and submitted that to the state. And basically, there was four things that we needed to address. One was the use of fund balance, and we explained to them that that had been planned. We had actually budgeted a deficit for three years in total. Those deficits varied slightly from the budget for a couple of reasons, but we addressed that in the letter. We addressed the fact that in, I think, two departments, we were slightly over-budgeted even after doing budget amendments, and explained that our annual budgeting process, as well as the fact that, you know, we may need to be more conservative in those estimates to avoid those kinds of issues in the future. And they asked about two comments that the auditors had made. One was on the withholding taxes, which council's aware of and which we've taken care of. And the last issue was on, we had a couple of account numbers that weren't in accordance with the state charter accounts, which we've already fixed. So we addressed all four of the issues and submitted that to the state. They told us if you don't hear anything, then you're good to go, and if you have a problem with it, we will let you know. But I just wanted to clarify, there is no prohibition on using fund balance. It's not a violation of state statute whatsoever. Does anybody have any questions regarding that?
I, you know, I think the state was looking at us in running a deficit budget as opposed to taking money from the fund balance to cover a deficit in the budget, and there's a difference in that.
Well, they don't know, I don't think they were looking at it that way, Mr. Mayor. I think they were looking at the fact that we've drawn down our fund balance for three years. I'm not sure that they're actually looking at it as to what we've actually budgeted. The state is very concerned about communities getting into financial and fiscal distress. They have a number that are under emergency management. We're nowhere near that, and we don't intend to go there. But what I will say is, four or five years ago, the state was toying around with like a 12-step checklist where they would look at the financial statements, they would check boxes, and if you had, you know, a certain number of these metrics that they were looking at, which is kind of an early warning indicator for fiscal distress, they were thinking about implementing something like that. And they did have some of those exposure drafts out there for communities to comment on, but nothing ever came of that. And I asked that of Treasury as well. So I think what they've done is they've probably looked at their already existing internal processes, which is to review all the audits that are submitted to the state for certain things, and then maybe added a little bit to that, and, you know, if they see that a community's running deficits, they just start kind of reaching out to say, hey, didn't know if you were aware of that. It's kind of how I read that when I talked to them.
Any questions or comments?
I don't get any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks. I will move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is your opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance are to be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment? We'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Just want to remind the council as well as the community that on Friday, this Friday, at 10:30 at the vote, the city's going to receive their redevelopment-ready community certification. It's quite an honor. We're one of only nine communities in the state that's received that certification, so I encourage you to come to the vote Friday, January 1st, and celebrate with us.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City finance manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public works director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Do we have public safety here? City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cooper?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I will likely be gone for the first two meetings scheduled in February. I will be in St. Louis, Missouri, helping my daughter, she's having her first child.
Yes.
Is, how are we doing with our maintenance records? Have we purchased software or?
We have not purchased the software. We've been keeping paper records now and have a file system. Because we've got a new mechanic, and he joined us after that budget was approved, I'm giving him some time to evaluate what system would work best for him.
I just, I see the trucks going down there. He's, he doesn't go pick up parts, he has, the people deliver them to him.
He's running a very efficient operation, and if you look at our supplies in public works, it's a little bit higher because he's doing a lot of preventive maintenance. He's got everything up to speed. He's got delivery systems with all of our vendors, so they're bringing everything to him, so he doesn't have to spend the day going out to them. He's doing a very good job.
So what I hear you're saying is you just haven't had time to get that part rolling yet?
Well, I've made him aware that we've got two, actually two purchases under the motor pool. One is for diagnostic software, the other one was for tracking software, you know, for the fleet maintenance. And I, so he's well aware of that, that we've got that money budgeted and why we budgeted. And so for the diagnostic equipment, he wants to get through the winter to see how much demand there is for it. Certainly, when you have different people, old mechanic, new mechanic, they've got different opinions on it, so I told him we'd give him the winter to, for him to evaluate that. It's our biggest demand on maintenance.
That's fair. He's the one that's got it.
And then he's got a system prepared now that he's worked with in the past for maintaining paper copies, and so I told him, once we got through the wintertime, we'd be able to sit down and look at how, you know, maybe it's an iPad where he can get that software and be able to use it without spending a lot of time at a desk typing in the stuff, so.
Thank you. Good, Jeff. With that window of cold weather that we had last week, we had any freezes?
On the water system? Not that we're aware of.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything? Nothing, Your Honor?
Nothing.
All right. Saturday, Mayor Fortem Polinski and I were able to attend a regional fisheries workshop at West Shore Community College. It was very refreshing to note that in a survey that was accomplished during the 2016 fishing season, people that came to Manistee to fish expressed the highest degree of satisfaction of anyone along the shoreline in Michigan with the results of their fishing experience in the city of Manistee. We beat Luddington by about half a point on a 1 to 5 scale, so people have reported excellent results in satisfaction in coming to Manistee to do their fishing this last season. A really noteworthy thing, and we talked to the Harvard Commission today about using such information in a positive marketing scheme. I'd like to thank all of the citizens in attendance for coming out tonight. Please drive careful on the way home, it might be slippery. And with that, I take a motion to adjourn. Let me.